Good evening, everybody. I know it is seven forty-five and our meetings typically start at seven thirty and we try to be as punctual as possible, but we did have a bond forum for the turf field referendum coming up in October. So we appreciate the patience of us running a little over and we look forward to a wonderful business meeting. With that, can I have a motion to reconvene into open session, motion Dr. Siddiqui, second to Mrs. Weiss, all in favor? Five zero, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. It's behind us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of September first, two thousand and twenty-one, motion Mrs. Momolito, second in Dr. Siddiqui. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, five zero. And Dr. Bossert, that brings us up to accommodations this evening and I see we have many students in attendance, so we look forward to hearing all of them.
I have to say, once again, I thank the board for the opportunity to commend some wonderful students. My favorite part of every meeting is the opportunity to celebrate some of the accomplishments of our students and often our faculty and staff. To assist me in doing so tonight, I would like to call upon our award-winning, school-to-watch principal honorary, Dr. Moran.
Thank you. I appreciate you always saying that very much. Thank you. So, good evening. I am Dr. Moran, the proud principal of Elwood Middle School, and I would like to thank the Board of Education.
Use your microphone, award-winning Dr. Moran.
I just thought I was loud. I thought you could all hear me. Should I? I'm gonna start from the beginning. Good evening. I am Dr. Moran, the proud principal of Elwood Middle School, and I would like to thank the Board of Education and Dr. Bossert for allowing me the opportunity to recognize some really amazing recent graduates of Elwood Middle School. And thank you to the high school for letting me honor them. These students embody our mantra of respect, responsibility, and relationships and have spent their three years taking full advantage of everything the middle schools had to offer. I would like to begin with Ishan Shaw. Ishan, would you like to come join me at the podium? Ishan has spearheaded the development of the ethics bowl at Elwood Middle School, one of only two middle schools on Long Island to participate in such a prestigious event. Ishan was dedicated to his teammates and performed exceptionally well. Ishan also seeks to create opportunities for himself. He personally applied to participate in the online conference with students around the nation in the Model UN, representing Elwood Middle School. He was awarded second place as an outstanding delegate. I would also like to add, for all of his amazing intellectual accomplishments, Ishan will forever be known to me for his kind and compassionate heart. Every day at lunch, when he was in sixth grade, there was a student who sat alone. And each day, and I mean every day, Ishan would invite him to come sit with his friends. Very frequently, the student declined, but it never stopped Ishan from asking again the next day. Ishan's beautiful spirit and commitment to his academic growth will take him on to great things at JGS, and we are so proud of you. I would like to now invite the Girl Scout troop sixteen nineteen members, Brianna Morrow, Kylie Meehan, Daniella Rehan. Danielle, help me. Rarin, thank you. We practiced outside. And Emma Roth-Leader, would you please come join me at the podium? These young ladies have worked tirelessly all school year, making contributions to championing the many individuals that have done amazing things. They created daily quotes for our Black History Month to be read over the PA each day. They created a fun and interactive bingo game for students in the cafeteria for Women's History Month. And it was their desire to create something that could have a long-lasting impact that they used for their Girl Scouts Silver Award, and they called it Inspiring Women Display. EMS is very lucky. If you just, when you walked in, and if you didn't see it, please, when you walk out, take a peek. They made an amazing display that has QR codes on them with the vast number of women and their major impacts to life. Additionally, they included a mirror, so young girls could quite literally see themselves as they learn about other incredible women. We are so proud of them and grateful for the long-lasting addition to our library, and again, please check it out. Emma would also like to share a few words.
Thank you. Good evening. Hi, I am Emma Roth-Leader. This is Kylie Meehan, Daniella Rarin, and Brianna Morrow. We are ninth graders at John Glenn and part of troop sixteen nineteen. We are here to present our Silver Award. For our Silver Award, we wanted to teach our peers and students in other grades about women who shaped history. So, we did some research. We found forty amazing women from different fields, math, science, art, engineering, social justice, music, athletics, and medicine, who aren't as well-known but did monumental things. We wanted to share all the women we learned about, so we came up with a game, but we wanted them to enjoy it. They were able to learn about women while having fun. We played a bingo game with them during Women's History Month in March. After that, we wanted to leave these women's legacy behind in our school. We created a display of all our original forty women and many, many more. In our display, we wanted everyone to be able to learn about some of the women, so we linked QR codes to the slideshows we created. On your way out, we encouraged you to look at them and interact with it. We would also like to thank some people. Thank you, Dr. Moran and Mrs. Ballelo, who helped us make this possible and were so helpful and supportive from the very beginning. Thank you to the custodians who helped put up the display and make it look so gorgeous. Thank you to Ms. Fipe, who let us use her display case and was very enthusiastic about the display. Thank you to our leader, Ms. Amy, who sadly couldn't join us tonight, but we wouldn't have been able to do it without you. Thank you to all our moms who were so supportive throughout it all. Thank you to the Board of Ed and Dr. Bossert for giving us this opportunity to display our, to present our display tonight. And finally, thank you to everyone who came to tonight to support us. We hope you liked the display.
Thank you to Dr. Moran for helping us to recognize these wonderful students and to the high school administration present. You have some, some new talent in the hallway, so please take note. We expect big things as they progress through John Glenn. Mr. Tomia, with your permission, our students that are here tonight, we are certain you have homework and other initiatives to tend to. So if you would like to be dismissed at this time, it would be a perfect opportunity to politely look at your display on the way out. Thank you.
Ladies, congratulations. And Mr. Shaw, congratulations to you as well. Have a great night, everybody. With their departure, Dr. Bossert, that brings us up to our superintendent's report tonight, if you would, please.
In an effort to try to get us back on our time schedule, I will limit the report to saying, I believe we just had a very successful community forum where we had the opportunity to review the proposed bond with the community. For those who are not present and are watching us now, I encourage you to check the website tomorrow under the District Information Bond tab to watch a video of the discussion that took place. And other than that, I will just comment to the board and community that the opening schools have gone extremely smoothly. I am very pleased to report that as I travel the hallways of each of our four buildings, I see students engaged in wonderful learning opportunities with their teachers. I see wonderfully clean and upgraded facilities that they have the opportunity to have these experiences in, and the State of the Union is strong in Elwood. Things are going very, very well at the start of the school year, and we appreciate all your support that helped to make that happen.
Thank you, Dr. Bossert. One second.
Thank you, Mr. Tomia.
You're welcome. So, admitted from the agenda this evening, but certainly happy to have you, is Mr. Rourke, who is our, and I need the first name, Jimmy, yes, right, Jimmy Rourke, I remembered. He had his brother not too long ago, and you have a tough act to follow because he was pretty good. I have a feeling you could beat him because younger siblings usually are very competitive, so I expect you to bring it up and steal the show. But with no further ado, Jimmy Rourke, our new all-school president and student liaison to the Board of Education.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. So, thank you for the kind introduction, and it's my pleasure to serve as this year's board liaison. The two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three school year is off to an exciting and busy start across all of our schools already. So, beginning at Harley Avenue, the kindergarten orientation was a great success as teachers and administrators welcomed in the youngest class of John Glenn Knights, the class of twenty thirty-five. That's a, it's a tough one to say. Okay, well, the students have already participated in a behavioral, in a positive behavioral interventions and supports, or PBIS, assembly to promote the three Rs, respect, responsibility, and relationships. Additionally, the school's DOT Day celebration, based on Peter Reynolds' book titled The DOT, was a great opportunity to cultivate creativity, courage, and collaboration in student populations. Harley Avenue looks forward to its weekly spirit, school spirit days every Friday of this school year, and it will be hosting its back-to-school night this coming Tuesday, September twentieth. Now onto Boyd, where our third, fourth, and fifth graders are finishing up their first full week of school. In a similar fashion to Harley, Boyd hosted their version of a PBIS assembly this week, and fifth-grade students have begun reading the morning announcements as well. The school is looking forward to opening its new makerspace this next week, and its back-to-school night is scheduled for next Wednesday, September twenty-first. At the middle school, sixth graders are quickly adjusting to their schedules and enjoying their courses and their freedom between classes. Many seventh and eighth graders started their fall sports season, and across all grades, students have started to meet with various clubs as well. The middle school has already had their Meet the Teacher night this past Wednesday, September fourteenth, but their back-to-school social will be held next Friday, September twenty-third. The new year kicked off at John Glenn, the high school, with band camp, fall sports, freshman buddy training, and freshman orientation prior to our first day of classes. In our first week back, students and faculty alike said our goodbyes to Mrs. Brzezinski, and while we will all miss her, we are excited for our new administration with Mr. McNamara serving as our principal and Ms. Sixnow serving as our assistant principal. So, sports seasons are already in full swing with many John Glenn victories across our talented programs. Additionally, club, grade-level assemblies have been held to discuss student expectations, and clubs and organizations have begun holding interest meetings with more to come in the following weeks. The Glenn faculty and staff are looking forward to meeting parents and guardians at the back-to-school night next Thursday, September twenty-second. Across all of our schools, we are looking forward to another great year, and personally, it's hard to believe that this will be my last. So, thank you all for your time and attention, and have a good night. Thank you.
Jimmy, thank you for your wonderful survey of all the district, all the buildings within our schools. We always appreciate hearing what's going on throughout the buildings and not just at the high school. And it's not the easiest task to make sure that you touch upon each building that you're not in, so thank you for taking the time to do that. And we look forward to a wonderful year with you bringing your reports and updates, and we love to hear from the student body. So you're their voice. Anytime there's a concern, bring it to ourselves. Dr. Bossert, love to hear from the students. That's the business we're in. So you're the voice, you're the leader. Hopefully, you take that role seriously, which I know you will, and we look forward to hearing from you.
And if I may add to that, Mr. Tomia, Mr. Rourke, this is the second time I've had the opportunity to hear you speak over the last couple of weeks. Jimmy mentioned the freshman orientation that took place with freshman buddy mentors in the new ninth-grade class a few weeks ago, prior to the start of school year. And Jimmy was asked to share insight with the new incoming freshman class. And you sort of spoke more eloquently and reflectively than ninety-five percent of the adults I know. And I actually embarrassed your mother by telling her that in the hallway after you spoke. But I appreciated the message that you conveyed to the class. And if I could simply summarize what he said, it was, savor the moment, understand where you are, and really take advantage of every opportunity. And I really appreciated that message, and I hope that your classmates heard you. And thank you for your update tonight. I apologize for your name being admitted for the agenda. That is demerit for me, and we will make sure it appears on the next. And we look forward to hearing from you throughout the year. Thanks so much.
And you also can go because you may have homework or other things that you'd like to do, so you are dismissed as well. You're welcome. Don't forget to check out the Girl Scouts project outside, though. All right, and that brings us up to our first residence remarks this evening. Seeing one, I'm gonna go through our blurb. Please bear with me. Sorry, I just, if you, if someone's going to speak, I do just need to give the policy blurb. The Board encourages all residents to attend its meeting, and this section of the agenda affords them the opportunity to speak. Persons wishing to speak should identify themselves, state whether they are a resident of the Elwood School District, and any organizations that they represent at this meeting. Comments related to the district's business or any agenda item should be kept as brief as possible and may not exceed Board Policy one, two, three, zero. Questions or comments concerning matters which are not on the agenda will be taken under consideration and may be discontinued by the Board President. Public discussions of matters relating to staff, students, or others at which their reputations, privacy, or right to due process could in some way be violated is prohibited. Thank you for that. Please state your name.
Good evening. I'm known in the district as Mrs. Fumarow. I have twin daughters in Boyd Elementary. They are in fifth grade. Their names are Alexandra and Samantha Fumarow. On a personal note, I served the NYPD for twenty-four years, and I retired five years ago in the rank of captain. With that being said, I believe I have some qualifications to talk about school safety. So, I want to begin my little speech here with something that some of you might recognize. There are two ways to do something, the right way and again. On May twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, we had a tragic shooting where nineteen students and two teachers were fatally shot and seventeen others were wounded at Robb Elementary School in Uvald, Texas. Regardless, we should always be on a heightened state of alert. I ask you, the members of the Board, to do an analysis with statistics and make comparisons with other districts and report back to the community with convincing evidence that our district, the Elwood District, is doing things the best way for the safety and security of our children because as far as I'm concerned, there is no other way. So what is the best way? Is it going to be armed? Do we need to arm our security guards? That's a question that we all need to discuss and come to a mutual agreement, yes or no. Enhancing our security? Is that the answer? Enhancing our security? If I was standing here as the detective interviewing a criminal, we would call that enhancing the arrest. I think we need to look at both options and ask ourselves, is Elwood the safest that it can be? Because there is always room for improvement. As I tell my daughters Samantha and Alexandra quite often, in everything that they do, there is always room for improvement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fumarow. Any other residence remarks? Seeing none, we will end this portion of our residence remarks. There will be another one later in the agenda. All right, and Dr. Bossert, that brings us up to our draft board goals for this two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year. So thank you, Ms. Clem, for bringing that up for us. Board of Education, you have in front of you both in hard copy as well as on the screen, the draft goals for this upcoming school year. And, Dr. Bossert?
Thank you, Mr. Tomia. Just to remind the board and to inform the community, each year, the Board adopts goals that represent the philosophy and the objectives of the school district for the coming year. We use these goals to shape our initiatives throughout the year, all professional development of our staff, the experiences our students will have, and the work being done within the district. This year, this summer was a busy one for our Board and the administration. So rather than having a physical singular day retreat, the Board charged me with starting a shared document of draft goals, and each Board member carefully reviewed them, made comments, suggestions, and revisions. And this is the current draft that we hope encompasses all of the priorities of the Board, all of the suggested enhancements and revisions to the document. And I'm hopeful that the four goals presented tonight in draft form reflect the desires of the Board so that at the next meeting, the Board can adopt these goals for the year, and we will use them to drive the work of the district. So tonight is the opportunity for the Board to take a final review and make any comments or suggestions that you feel relevant. But hopefully, through all of the electronic communication, we're pretty close to where we want to be.
Thank you, Dr. Bossert. With that being said, we did have plenty of time to wordsmith this and review it, but if there's any revisions, do we want to go goal by goal, or it's posted? Are we good? I don't know. Everybody's good with the, the way the draft is as of now? Yes?
One, one, yeah, no, one quick thing. On goal number two, it says to return to pre-pandemic conditions. I don't think we can ever go back to pre-pandemic conditions. I think it's, you know, most people are calling it the new normal. So that was the only word that I, you know, I didn't, you know, may want to consider changing because, like I said, going back to pre-pandemic, I don't know if we'll ever go back there since we've been through. But everything else, I think we've worked on a lot. We went back and forth. I think they're all great goals for our students, staff, and community members, so that's my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scroll. Ms. Weiss?
Hi. Okay, so I had submitted.
Hold on one second, please. A singular Board member has made a suggestion. Thank you, Mr. Scrollola. I need to know if there is board consensus to make a change to the term "pre-pandemic."
What did you want to change it to? Yeah.
I'm not sure that I'm comfortable, I'm not sure I'm comfortable with "new normal" because I've been trying to steer clear of that expression within governance of the district. But perhaps synonyms for "pre-pandemic" are typical conditions.
Or just return to conditions, practices, and expectations inclusive of community engagement. Just omit the word "pre-pandemic."
Well, I think the goal is to reestablish back to that, though. If we omit that word, then we lose the goal of establishing back to pre-pandemic times.
But do you think that that's really an overlining goal, or do you think that that goal number two should be, that was my suggestion, that it be incorporated into the other goals and then, as opposed to being its own separate goals? Like, there should be portions of it that are under extraordinary focus. There are portions of it that should be under.
So your suggestion to admit goal number two and disperse A through E in goal number two to goal one, three, and four?
I had submitted. Whereas I would like to see was more.
Just asking, I'm not.
Yeah.
Just wanted for clarity purposes to make sure that was what you were talking about. Okay.
I'm gonna, I agree with goal number two. Even though we may not be able to achieve full pre-pandemic conditions, I think it is a good goal to try to strive to where we were prior and then using the experience that we had through the pandemic to improve where we were. So we're always trying to improve from, you know, from where we were, but I think we do have to kind of have a goal to achieve, even though it shouldn't look exactly the same as pre-pandemic because we have learned so much. We are doing so much more in terms of technology and inclusivity. But I do think we need to leave those, that wording in there because we do have to have a goal to strive for.
If we omit the word and just throwing this out there, return to, return to conditions, practices, and expectations inclusive of community engagement that we are accustomed to, to get rid of pre-pandemic and.
I just think it's unobtainable if you say return to pre, and we want to obtain our goals as a board. I just think using that word "pre-pandemic," we're not gonna.
Okay, so we have one Board member who is opposed to the wording "pre-pandemic." Are there other Board members who are opposed to the word "pre-pandemic"? Before we go through, trying to find a word that fits post-pre-pandemic?
Yeah, I, I.
You want it out and changed, or you're okay with?
I, I don't like the wording.
You don't like "pre-pandemic"?
Yeah.
Dr. Siddiqui, do you like, you like the word "pre-pandemic"? Ms. Momol, you like the word "pre-pandemic"? I think we, I would change it, just in the case, I hear now that the question was raised from Mrs. Scroll. It is hard to reach pre-pandemic, but I was okay with Dr. Bossert's suggestion of "typical," but I don't know if that was well-received by the Board of Education. And I think we're striving to get back to a typical school year. And through pre-pandemic elsewhere, is it the way the pre-pandemic is? I'm, Ms. Mamalito?
I mean, to me, that's our goal this year, is to have the most normal school year and to return back to business prior to COVID. I mean, we've been saying that since, you know, Superintendent's Conference Day. So it is what it is. That's the reality. For the last two years, we've been doing everything different from pre-pandemic times, and we want to get back to what our norm was prior to it. So it just is what it is, in my opinion.
I think also Bullet A touches upon the social, emotional component. I think that you're worried about, Mrs. Scroll, the safety, health, and welfare of the students that lies within the goal. Is that okay?
No, I just, like I said, I'm just, it's just the word for me. Because like I said, as a Board member, I want to hit all of our goals. And I just don't think it's possible to ever go back to a full pre-pandemic. We've learned, we've grown, we're going to be better. So, you know, something like maybe the word, I don't know, typical, I don't know, just for me, that one word is like almost setting us up not to achieve it, in my opinion. That's just my opinion. I'm just one person.
Nothing? Okay. I'm just asking.
Listen.
Any soundboards? Do you have any suggestions?
In, in practice, we've been saying "pre-pandemic" quite a bit. If, if the Board isn't comfortable with the wording within the goal, we will wordsmith some synonyms that, that have a similar meaning. But in practice, I, I think in the hallways, you're going to hear "pre-pandemic" a lot, to be candid.
And I, and I agree, but I also think moving forward, you know, we should have possibly a different word that, you know, we don't have to keep saying "pre-pandemic" for the next 10 years. You know, it's just moving forward, doing a better, a better job than we did last year. That's just, you know, my opinion.
Okay, but within the goal, just, just for clarification on that, the goal itself is an okay goal. I know Mrs. Weiss had raised the concern that she didn't like the goal in its entirety.
You like this one?
Just in off the desk, out of the press. Return and. Return to and approve upon pre-pandemic conditions, practices, and expectations inclusive of community engagement. Does that work? Gives a little bit of Mrs. Scroll's suggestion of, we know we're not going to get back to complete normalcy, but we also know that we are dealing with pre-pandemic times that we have to come back to. Any objections to the suggestion from Ms. Marks? And Ms. Marks, thank you. Any objections? None? None? Me at the middle? Little objection, Ms. Weiss?
I mean.
Everybody? All right, I think if the will of the Board is, thank you, Ms. Marks, we will go with that language. If you can keep that pen hot, we might have some more changes coming your way. All right, so we took care of the title. Thank you, Mrs. Scroll, for bringing that to our attention. And thank you to the Board for the willingness to reword that a little bit to represent both feelings there. So the other question of goal number two was whether or not to disperse goal number two throughout other goals. But now that we just came up with a heading, I think we're going to keep it, Ms. Weiss, if that's okay. I think it isn't, it's a pretty large goal. It's a broad goal. It's something I think that may need its own goal because when we go to measure these goals at the end of the year, I think some of these that lie within there do fall within that heading. I think we might want that for our own purposes.
Yeah, I just, I, I think, again, these are more to me like subgoals under the other goals, like the extraordinary student focus and fiscal responsibility and community engagement. So that was where my direction was going, that those are more pillars, and these are more sustainable goals underneath those pillars. And that was my, you know, I guess, my diversion from difference in that.
It's a fair diversion. I hear it, and I get what you're, what you're saying. But I don't think there's objections to the goal in its entirety, though, from the Board. So I think for now, we'll leave it. And gives us an ample opportunity to really hone in on goal number two and make sure that those specifics are achieved and met for our students.
Yeah, I think to piggyback that comment, Mrs. Weiss, I think having a singular goal identifies the priority of, of the return. And I think you're correct that our practices will change in each of the areas, and having it pulled out as a singular goal helps to bring emphasis to that need. I, I hear you, that returning to pre-2020 practices is our goal within each area of governance. So bringing it out as a specific goal just helps to bring focus and emphasis to that.
Well, yeah, I mean, we want to move forward. We don't want to keep revisiting backwards. And I feel that, you know, in doing so, what's the matter? Oh, okay. Okay, so now I'm starting, but, but, yeah, so, you know, we, we want to strive to achieve. We don't want to keep, you know, going backwards and looking backwards. We want to go forward and look forward, and so, you know.
I was, when you said that, that's what I was thinking about.
That's why I'm just saying.
Show your mic for a second, Ms. Weiss, sorry. But I think if this was next year, this goal shouldn't be on here. But given that this is the first opportunity of a full, normal school year, last year we started with masks on, there were still some regulations that were in place that we had to follow. This is the first year, so I think that's why this goal as a standalone is important. Next year, I hear you, pre-pandemic's over. We're back to normal. We should be back to normal. And if we hit all these goals within goal number two, then we're where we need to be, and that's where we should be because that's why we're setting these goals for the administration to achieve.
So something like point number C, where you're talking about focusing on, you know, that really goes more into extraordinary student focus. But I, I see, you, you want it to be stand out by itself in the terms of regression, Dr. Bossert? Is that what you're looking for?
I, I really, I really think that it's been an overwhelming emphasis of both the administration and the faculty to try to create that sense of normalcy and bring our practices, our best practices, back to eliminate some of those pandemic adjustments we had to make. So I want to shout out, and a goal helps us to do that, that that is a focus of the school year.
Okay.
All right, Ms. Weiss? Okay. Ms. Weiss, we just shut the mic, sorry.
Oh.
I know. All good. So with that being said, are there any other goals? Wordsmithing, and this should be taking place this evening? Or is everybody comfortable with the goals that are in place? And I'm going with goal three and four because one and two are now done.
So with goal number three, again, I wanted to see a more global, more fiscal responsibility. And I felt like the grant-funded programs is under our fiscal, you know, responsibility. And that's, I feel like that's, again, like a subgoal as a torrent, you know, you have holistic review of all grant-funded programs for goal number three. And I like something more that, you know, achieving, you know, sustainable fiscal health or something of that nature that's more global.
Okay. Ms. Mamalito?
So under extraordinary student focus, D, make fiscally responsible positions that allow for maximizing of resources to support students' programs and district initiatives, including grant-funded initiatives. So we hit the point you're making under goal one, extraordinary student focus.
I think, again, I think that that is a primary focus. We're fiscally, you know, we're stewards, what do you always say? Financial stewards of the district. And I think that that is, again, a pillar, and it should be, all those should be underneath that as opposed to them being somewhere else. That's just my point, you know? Again, it's, it's my thoughts, it's the logic of, you know, how I, how we think about it.
So just want to make sure, Ms. Weiss, the goals that you want to achieve are somewhere within the goals, but they may not just lie within the specific goal heading that you're looking for? I just want to make sure the goals that we're setting for the administration are the goals and the will of the Board, which we took ample time over the summer to review the goals to send to them. So I just want to make sure the charge that we're giving the administration is somewhere within one of the four goals. I understand it may not fall within a subcategory or goal that you want, but am I correct in stating that you are seeing the goals that you do want? But you're missing something. I just want to make sure.
I'm seeing them. I'm just, you know, they're more to me, subgoals as opposed to the, the grant-funded, to me should go under sustainable fiscal health as, you know, as opposed to it being its own separate goal.
If I can offer some insight to the reason why I drafted it the way it's been presented to the Board, we really do have to look at our grant-funded programs in isolation because the grant is expiring. The Board and administration will be charged with analyzing the programs contained within the grant funding because they either have to be continued by being placed in the district's operating budget or discontinued. The Board is aware that we included as many one-time expenses in the grant as possible, so we will have some limited decisions to make. But unless there are market changes to our state aid or incredible flexibility within the tax cap, the Board will be faced with making difficult decisions specifically about grant-funded programs, which is why I pulled this out in isolation. Now is probably an appropriate time to share with the Board that our grant-funded programs are being audited by the state of New York. We received an email this week saying that all of our expenses associated with each of our grants are going to be audited by state or county. New York State, so that Ms. Valley, Ms. Dunkel, Dr. Hull, and her team will be itemizing every expense associated and measuring outcomes. So I think that practice speaks in concert with the goal. We do have to look at the grant a bit differently than our typical budget, and I think having a goal approved by the Board helps us to do that and will now clearly work in concert with our mandated work from the state.
I also think our goal last year was maximize financial opportunities. I think every year, as a Board, we are fiscally, it's always just built in to us being fiscally responsible to the community. So, you know, I, I think that's always something that is just built in to the district. So I do think that this year, we do need to go through all the grants and stuff and decide what we're going to keep, what we can't keep. But I do think that our, as a financial institution, we're always looking to be fiscally responsible. And like I said, last year's goal was maximize financial opportunities. So it's very similar to last year. So I think, you know, every year we should have some type of different goal.
Okay, well, I, I agree with you, and I'm not disagreeing with this at all. I mean, I think it's, yes, I, I, I'm not disagreeing with it, but you just stated the case for itself. I mean, the fiscal, you know, the fiscal health is the, the goal, the, the overlining goal, and this is under that.
So, I mean, personally, I don't feel that any of these subcategories are any less important than the overall goal. And I feel like maybe, like, because it's not the goal, what I'm hearing from you is that you feel like it may not be as glaringly apparent. But we specifically stated in goal number one about fiscal responsibility. So I'm perfectly comfortable.
You put it under academics, though.
But, 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 but it encompassed many aspects of where fiscal responsibility should be looked at, which is the entire organization. It implies that by that, through that sentence. So just because we don't have fiscal responsibility as our main goal doesn't mean it's not part of our overall goals. So it's not that it's not being stated. I mean, I personally don't have an issue with it not being the main goal. It's an implied, we are fiduciaries of this organization, and it's stated under goal one. Like, I think, you know, it doesn't need to be restated and restated or the main goal. It's just as important under 1D as it would be if it was a goal in and of itself. I mean, how does everybody else feel? I mean, are we okay with moving on with that? Or I don't think it needs to be expanded on any, anymore.
Hearing, seeing no objections. Nothing? All right, Ms. Weiss? Well, we appreciate the input, and hopefully that it being a part of the goal does reach upon your wishes, and you do get to see the information that you're looking through be achieved in the goal that's set. 1D is going to be one that you refer back to. When the time comes to reflect upon these goals, you can say, through 1D, how was ABC and D done? And then standalone, you'll have the grants that now, not only do we have the auditors going line by line with a fine-tooth comb, we'll be able to take a holistic review of those goals and make sure that if there's any programs that were implemented through the, through the grant-funded program, we'll keep them or look how to build them into our operation budget. And if not, we make the hard decision to forego them, and we make that a goal of this organization this year, which is going to be important because we have backfilled and utilized this grant money. When that goes away, we have to figure out ways to omit or redo. So I think it is a good standalone goal. I think next year, same thing. I think it's the same thing. I think we do have to change the goals up too a little bit. We can't charge the administration with being fiduciaries and being, you know, cognizant spenders of our tax dollars. They better be that. You have to do that. If you don't do that, then we're not doing our jobs. We're, we are the steward. We're the gatekeepers of the taxpayers' dollars. So that's our job. I don't think, that's our goal. If there is a goal, that's the Board goal, I think. Well, I mean, through us. I don't think we need to charge the administration with that goal. These goals are ones that we expect to be seen. I think the fiduciary side has always been seen and will always have that expectation. And it still is under 1D, correct?
And also, sitting on the Audit Committee last year, we got really good reviews. Mr. Tomio sat with me on the committee. We're in really good shape fiscally according to our internal and external auditors. So it is always implied every year that we have to be responsible to the community. So.
Yeah, and I just wanted to also say that you have to have it as an individual goal, like the holistic review of all grant-funded programs, because within that is how you're going to review the grant-funded programs. Because as you just said, we have to make efforts to include some of the most essential parts of the grant-funded programs for the 23-24 school year. So we need to have that as a focus for the administration so that we can tease out what we like and what we can concentrate on. And unfortunately, we are going to have to let some things go, but we need to have a priority or a way to measure that. And by having it in an individual goal, I think, then that'll be easier to measure.
Right, but from our mission goal, our overlying goal is where they develop, the administration develops their tasks. And when I look at it, this looks like their portion and not our portion of what we're looking for. You know, we're looking more globally. They're, they're developing the semantics for how they're going to achieve what it is. And, and that's my point with all four of them. It's not that these are not great. These are great. Thank you, Dr. Bossert. They're wonderful. They, they represent to me more of an administration goals than a Board goals. And that's, and that's where I stand on that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments about the draft of the Board goals besides the one revision to the pre-pandemic language? Ms. Marks, I don't see any other changes that need to be made this evening. So if we could place this on the next agenda for adoption, we'd appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Board of Education, for taking the time to review the Board goals. Dr. Bossert, for putting them together, and look forward to seeing them be achieved this year. With that, we are up to our consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda this evening? Motion, Mrs. Mamalito, second, and Mrs. Skarola. Questions or comments? Seeing none? All in favor? Five-zero. Dr. Bossert, I know with that comes some appointments and some things that you'd like to speak about?
Yes. For those watching from home, and we're part of our personnel agenda tonight with that unanimous vote, those included on the personnel agenda are now officially members of the Elwood family. Welcome to the knighthood. One of those appointments made unanimously by the Board tonight is, one of our gentlemen is present this evening. One of the actions that the Board just took was to appoint an interim assistant principal to John Glenn High School to, to fill the vacancy created by Mr. McNamara's promotion to principal of, of John Glenn. And I thank Mr. McNamara and Ms. Signal for being with us tonight to help us introduce to the Board and community, Mr. Michael Bayo. Welcome to Elwood. Mr. Bayo will be serving for the 22-23 school year as the assistant principal of John Glenn, having recently retired from the same position within Seville High School where he served as an assistant principal for 12 years. Prior to that, Mr. Bayo was a very successful school council, school counselor, both in Seville and Garden City, having completed his undergraduate and graduate work at Hofstra University and getting his post-master certificate the same year I did at Stony Brook University, I'm just noticing. So he's been practicing a, a long time. That said, Mr. Bayo is presented to us as someone who will be an asset to the students, faculty, and staff of John Glenn, coming with many years of experience to our faculty. And we look forward to you beginning in that position on September the 19th. Perhaps you may use the microphone to share any words that you may have with the Board and community.
Thank you to the Board. Thank you for the opportunity, Dr. Bossert, and to the Board. I am grateful. I look forward to working with my new colleagues in making a, or making positive contributions to the students, families, and the Elwood School community in whole. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bayo. I will just add one other comment before the Board. When we were in Washington DC to receive the giant blue ribbon that now adorns the side of John Glenn High School, there was one other long. there was one other Long Island High School present to receive the same award. It was Seville High School, and Mr. Bayo was part of the team that helped him to achieve that blue ribbon status. So with excellence, we need excellence, and we welcome you to the team.
Welcome, Mr. Bayo. Just for clarity, we got it first because alphabetically, E comes before S. So we got the blue ribbon first, and now you're a knight, so you have no choice but to believe that. So congratulations and welcome aboard. And with that, we are up to our second residence remarks this evening. Seeing no residents wishing to speak, may I have a motion to? You're welcome. The policy still exists within the residence remarks from the first one, three minutes. You got us, Prunell. Thank you.
Good evening, board. I, you had residence remarks before, I believe. I know I missed them. I, I was busy. I just, I, I.
Did you just, sorry, just state your name for the record?
I'm sorry, I apologize. It's been a while. My name is Andre Burknell, father of three in the district. I, I'm sure that it was addressed before, I, during the previous residence remarks. I just, regarding the bond, I'm not sure. I, I think it's up to the residents to vote. I just wanted to state, I, I, I just don't feel that this is the right time. I, it's, it's a tough time for a lot of people financially now with, with, you know, with the, with the inflation and everything going up. And I, I, I too have dreams of like things that I'd like to, you know, to, to purchase. But, you know, sometimes we just have to hold off on things. Also, you know, my wife and I have been doing a lot of trying to do some research on some of the benefits of turf versus grass. And I definitely think that there are many, many advantages to a turf field. Obviously, you know, being able to use it even on rainy days without too much mud. But one of the things that we were studying was the possibility of runoff going into the, into the drinking water. You know, and I know the drinking water has been a concern for many, many towns here in Long Island. Some of the materials that are used in the turf fields are sometimes toxic. And so it's just something I would like to, our residents, anybody watching, to consider. You know, I know you guys are all going to vote on this as well, but I just wanted to put that out there, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Prunell. And I know you missed part, part of the forum, or maybe all there. It is going to be archived and placed on the district website so you can hear all the concerns and comments and Dr. Bossert's presentation at your convenience. It will be posted, if it's not posted already, maybe tomorrow?
It'll be posted tomorrow, yes.
Thank you. Any other residence remarks this evening? Seeing none, motion for adjournment. Motion, Dr. Siddiqui, second, and Mrs. Scrollola, all in favor, five zero. Thank you, everybody.